Welcome to December 17, 2024, State Council Meeting, City Hall Chambers, 6:30 PM. We start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which lead our city to be strong and unified, may we continue the legacy of our founders, may we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We join you salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
And present.
I'm all to silence, Counselor Belanger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request a moment of silence in darker chambers for Mr. David Carl Meyer. A beloved husband, father, brother, uncle, and cousin passed away at the age of 53 on November 3rd, following a courageous fight against grade four astrocytoma. David was a graduate of Lawrence Central High School and held an associate's degree from Cape Cod Community College, a bachelor's degree from Indiana University, and a master's of education from UMass Lowell. David lived by the motto, "Peace and Love." As a teacher at several local schools, which included Innovation Academy Charter School and Presentation of Mary Academy, for nearly two decades, his classroom theme was, "Happiness is." David's passion for helping young people achieve confidence and success extended to his work as a multi-sport coach in school and in the community. David's coaching resume included Equi Medical Athletic Association Sports Lowell, where he coached softball, baseball, volleyball, basketball, and soccer. He also coached baseball in the Pawtucketville Youth Organization, he won a championship in soccer and baseball. David loved all Boston sports, but especially Red Sox baseball. He loved family time, movie nights, and Disney and beach vacations with family and friends. David is survived by his loving wife of 31 years, Jennifer, four children Samantha, Andrew, Alan, and Benjamin; parents Carl and Debbie; brothers Michael and Jason; sister-in-law Letha; nieces and nephews Nicholas, Christopher, Sarah, and Lucas; his numerous aunts, uncles, and cousins-in-laws Randy and Judy Lenter; his sister and brother-in-law Kathy and Steve Bowen; nieces and nephews Samuel, Veronica, Jonathan, Matthew, Abby, and Rachel; brother and sister-in-law Anthony and Leslie Lenter niece Harper. May rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to include in a moment of silence for Travis Joseph McCarthy, who passed away last Tuesday at the very young age of 31 years old. Travis was born July 15, 1993, at Lowell General Hospital to Paul and Joan McCarthy of Lowell. Travis graduated from Lowell High School in 2012, where he was a member of the football, wrestling, and track teams. Travis then went on to attend Massachusetts Maritime Academy, part his graduation in 2016. Travis worked for Wooded Inc. at Conquered Mass Water Treatment Plant, and most recently for Cedar Foods in Hayrow, Mass. Travis enjoyed attending concerts, playing golf, going to Disney World, socializing with his friends and cousins, and traveling. Travis never missed a chance to attend the Red Sox Bruins or Patriots game, no matter how terrible the weather was. He loved the time he spent with his nieces and nephews playing games, watching movies, and as Father Bob said yesterday at his mass, just hanging out with all his relatives. Along with his parents Paul and Joan, Travis was deeply missed, will be deeply missed by his siblings Andrew McCarthy, Charles Keller, my good friend Jackie Keller Roy, his nieces and nephews Abby Lynn and Logan Roy, and Aiden and Kaylin Keller, as well as many aunts, uncles, cousins, and lifelong friend Nathan McCarthy. Having attended yesterday's services, I have never seen so many people in the St. Francis Church that I did yesterday. It's testament not only to Travis, but the family that the McCarthys and the Kelleyers and the people that supported them, so Godspeed Travis.
Thank you, Counselor. I do have one, I'll do from the chair. Harry J. Speed passed away peacefully, surrounded by family members in Seminole, Florida at the age of 88. A lifelong Lowell resident, Harry was beloved by many in the community. Harry married the love of his life Donna Sousa Speed, a local model and dance instructor in 1963. For 57 years until Donna's passing in 2020, the couple enjoyed dancing at the Commonwealth Bar Room, dining at the Spare House, making trips to Foxwoods. Born in Acre in 1936, Harry attended St. Patrick's School, was an altar boy for several years. Many of his lifelong friendships were made in the Equi Medical Basketball League and Baseball Leagues. Captain of both the basketball team and boys officers, Harry graduated from Lowell High School in 1952. He received a basketball scholarship to Suffolk University, graduating with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration in 1956. He worked as an architectural sales representative for over 50 years. An avid sports fan, Harry was a coach at Lowell State Teachers College and a founder-coach at the St. Michael's Seminole Basketball League in McFerson Park. He was instrumental in coaching hundreds of Lowell youth over several years, creating lifelong bonds with many of the players and families. As a young man, he was a caddie at Vespa, later becoming a member at Long Meadow and the East End Club, where he was known to play in and photograph many local golf tournaments. Harry loved jazz, whale watching, deep sea fishing, traveling, and telling stories with friends and family. Mr. Speed is survived by John and Ava Speed of McCormick, South Carolina, Mr. Speed DeRoches, Lowell, Mass, Michael and Laura Speed, Seminole, Florida, Monica Speed, Alpharetta, Georgia, Dr. Olivia Speed and Zachary Bishop, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania, Catherine and Shane Obusby, Cummings, Georgia, Leah Speed Cummings, Georgia, Morgan DeRoches, Matthew DeRoches, and Jack DeRoches, Lowell. Also Caroline Speed, Vivian Speed, Harrison Speed, Seminole, Florida, Warren and Pamela Walsh, Woodhaven, Michigan, Lenore Sousa Kennedy, Lowell, Mass, Michael and Jacqueline Sousa Kaplan of Wells, Maine, Joladeen Gaffney, Lowell, Mass, Martha Sousa Kinney of Millbrook, New Hampshire, as well as many nieces and nephews whom he adored. Mr. Speed is predeceased by Donna Sousa Speed, son Matthew Speed, mother and father Harry and Anna Zalovsky Speed, Raymond and Anne Speed Senior, Robert and Mary Sousa, Brendan and Julian Sousa, and many dear friends and family. Services would be held at St. Patrick's in the spring of 2025, and personally speaking, I was lucky enough to know Mr. Speed from a very young age, basically grew up at the same time as, may class of 1993 graduates with the Speed household out in Centerville. And I'm very sorry for the family, but now it's a pleasure to know the man. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we talk to the chamber? May they all rest in peace. Two, Mayor's business, 2.1 Communication and Remote Participation. Motion to accept or place found filed by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, made to the Transportation Subcommittee December 10th. City Council regular meeting December 10th, Park Recreation Subcommittee joint with Finance on December 11th for acceptance by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to motions, section 4, 4.1, Counselor Noon, request the city manager to provide an update, counsel regarding Andover Street plans, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we all know, and I know that particularly the Ballbuddy residents also know that Mass Dock has awarded City of Lowes $4 million to, for the Andover Street, you know, 2026 construction. They produced two option, those two options prepared by the Mass Dock Design Engineer for Resurfaced Project. So, the goal of the project is to reduce car speed on that street and creating a welcome environment for, for all as you enter City of Low. I know that the city, the city engineer, our city traffic engineer had presented to this council and also to the Ballbuddy's residents as well about the, those two option. And, you know, I filed this motion because I know that, and I trust, that the city manager going to deliver a good new. That good new reflect the concern and input of the Ballbuddy residents at some point in the very near future, because this project need to get start, and, you know, so that's why I put it on, so that, you know, the people know that this city council are not, you know, ignore this issue and concern, and that the manager heard it too, because he was there at the Ballbuddy's neighborhood meeting. That's why I filed the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate Counselor Noon making the motion and his comments are duly noted. So, as, as Counselor Noon stated, there was quite a bit of dialogue on this. You know, the residents in my district are watching in very closely on this and have been very, very engaged, which is great to see. So, between, you know, canvassing the district, which I've done going door-to-door, keeping all the residents in the know on this very important project, as well as a input session at the Riley School back in mid-November, I've heard from many, many constituents as to which option, and so with that being said, I have heard from, you know, dozens and dozens of my constituents, and by nearly a two-to-one margin, my constituents want it to remain concrete. So, I, you know, stated that morning at the Riley School that I want what my constituents wants. Now, I don't live on Andover Street, so the idea was to get everybody engaged and get a good consensus where the district is at. With that being said, I have a signed petition here in hand of approximately 112 signatures that support remaining concrete, which I will give to the clerk and submit into the file. So, that, that being said, it looks like my constituents have spoken, and by and large, again, from nearly a two-to-one margin, they want it to remain concrete. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'll submit it into the record. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, Counselor Noon, request city manager to work with the Hunger Homeless Task Force and meet with the justices in the Lowell District Court to coordinate resources, seconded by Counselor Yem. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Hunger and Homeless Task Force was started sometime back in 2019, and that's when we then had some conference in the In-Conference Center, and the initiative, the homeless, Housing First Initiative came about. I'm not sure if the Hunger Homeless Task Force still exists, however, what I do know is that, you know, in tackle these issues of homeless issue, that we have already as a city, through the managers in term of funding and whatnot, to a number of discipline that are working on to address the homeless issue. We have addressed, we have reached out to coordinate with the nonprofit organization, religious group, medical, mental health group, addiction center, and all of those, it's great thing. The one thing we have not done much of, or not at all, is the court system to coordinating the effort with them, invite them to the meeting to how we can address these issues together. You know, because it'll be a violation of ordinance, encampment ordinance, and/or criminal cases on trespassing or disorderly conduct and whatnot. The court basically process it and let people out. So, maybe there's a way to coordinate that effort, so that we can say, okay, now, the courts involved may be a conditions of, say, you know, in lieu of fine for violation of ordinance, or in lieu of having criminal record, that you go into this place, sort of speak, for addiction center or for mental health need or help, or some, of some sort. But Housing First, and then address those issue. I think the court have play a key role in this, and that's why I urge that we invite the court into this discussion. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.3, Counselor Noon, request city manager to work the parking department, sorry, to provide the city council with a report detailing the timeline for when the full completion of installation of cameras and lighting in all city garages, seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There is a registered speaker here.
Yes, let, let the register speak first.
John Knowles.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Wayne, for having me here. I have been a downtown Lowell resident for quite some time. I've been packing in the Leroy Garage for the past 12 years. When I first started packing that garage 12 years ago, it was $48 a month to park there as a resident, you know, for my leisure, everything. It has gone up in price every year since then, with no noticeable improvements to that garage. It is currently $93.75 to park in that garage as a resident. There's little concrete falling from the garage, there are no cameras to be spoken of. My personal vehicle's been damaged on multiple occasions in that garage. The only notable improvements I've noticed are line painting and some brands making new cameras in the stairways, you know, in the stairways, not pointed at the vehicles that we are paying to park in that garage. It's very concerning. When I went to file an accident report after my car was hit not too long ago, last week, I was given a huge runaround by not only the Leroy Garage or the parking department itself. I was sent from the Leroy Garage to the John Street Garage. They'd sent me to Lowell PD, said that the IT department there had it. They sent me back to the John Street Garage. It was a whole ring around. I was finally told by Peter, the parking manager at John Street today, that those cameras haven't worked in a couple of years since they got hacked. I'm not quite sure how they're not working if we just had those new ones installed in the stairways, you know, less than a year ago. It's incredibly frustrating. In summary, Leroy Garage is literally crumbling, you know. I've had beer bottles thrown at my car, I've had side mirrors stolen, you know. I went to park the other day and I noticed there was crumbling concrete that had freshly fallen within the last couple of days. One of my dear friends who lives downtown has an Audi convertible that had concrete fall on it, you know. It's, it's not okay. The state of the garage is alarming, it's appalling, and it's unacceptable, and we really need to address this. Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard you. So, at the subcommittee meeting last week, I believe Counselor Janess would share that meeting, and we have parking director talking about the timeline, not really timeline, but just saying that they do fix here, fix there, and cameras install. I want to, I really want a timeline on it in term of, say, the, not only the camera, but also lighting, you know, you ought to light up that place, you know, so that for safety concern, especially, you know, 5 o'clock is getting dark soon for a lot of people. People who work in downtown, people who work in school department, you know, people who are coming to eat out, dining at the restaurants and stuff, so we need to light that place up, and we also need to have cameras, so that not only the entering of, to the garage, but also in the garage itself, you know, throughout the city, we have however many garage we have. People pay for to, to use the garage, and they ought to be, feel safe. That safety concern is number one thing for a lot of people. If the young man here concerned about that, imagine a young ladies, you know. So, I think we need to do a better job at it, and we need to give a timeline, so that people know when it's going to get done. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleague for bringing this motion forward. This was a discussion point at the, at the recent meeting we had last week, I can't remember which subcommittee it was, but this was one of the things that came up. And, you know, listening to Mr. Knowles, we've all had those same experiences when my wife and I got back from our honeymoon in 2014 after we got married. Her car was parked in the John Street Garage at the time, and she came out and somebody had whacked into the side of it. The concrete falling, it happened on my car, the convertible he mentioned is my wife's car, happened to that one too. That was a few years ago, we thought we'd got that all cleaned up, now there's concrete on the ground again. I noticed this morning, when I was going to get in the car, I was walking up the stairwell in the John Street Garage, and the stairwell is just wet. The water, when it rains, just comes into the stairwell, and if you look up, you can see the tray of the stairwell is all rusted through. This was, we spent millions of dollars rehabbing that garage six years ago, I think it was, and it doesn't look like we spent it done. But the camera thing is, is really huge, because we've got people, residents, who spend over $1,000 a year to park their car in the garage, and yes, the contract we have says that the city's not liable for damage, but we should be able to do a better job here. Cameras, in addition to helping any residents who do have damage, figure out where that damage came from, also provides a sense of security and safety for the people in the garage who are coming and going. And I think it's important that we do what we can and figure out what it would take to bring these online. I do know that there are new cameras in the, in the Roy Garage that have yet to come online, but should be soon, and so that's a good thing. But I just want to know where we're at with an overall camera plan and, you know, what we're going to be doing going forward. The more, the better in my mind. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be reporting out on the Transportation Subcommittee later on. I'll echo the remarks of Counselor Noon and Janess. The only, in speaking with Mr. Ryan, I know through you, to the city manager, that he was working with you, city managerial, and looking at what were a timeframe on when all these cameras would be implemented and installed. Can you give the council an update right now where we are with that?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. The Comcast lines were just dropped, so that is in process. That has been a real challenge, for what reason I don't know, to be honest with you, but the company has been a little bit elusive in regards to getting it done. But I think this is a very timely piece, 4.3, for us to put something together in the next probably couple of weeks to get a timeline as to when that's going to happen. But we have had an issue with our internet provider, I should say, but it was Comcast. That was...
We should be anticipating a report soon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you, to the manager, don't we have a yearly maintenance plan inspection for all the garages?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do, Counselor. And a lot of these, a lot of activities actually going on within those garages as we speak, some has been slowed down simply because of the weather, but I anticipate, once again, I think this is very timely to get a detailed report as to what, what will be happening, or what, what order of magnitude it'll be happening over the, over the coming, coming months, probably.
I remember when we were going over all the garages, we had a detailed maintenance plan that was coming, and we were gonna, there's a capital plan for each one. Could you provide us again with that, and what actually, when the last inspection was on that garage? Because I think that's important to understand, okay, are we maintained, are, we should know this before the public stands up here and tells us that these things are falling apart, and have been for years, he said, over, you know, a couple of years, so if we can get that back, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Counselor Noon, request city manager to provide an update to the city council regarding the business improvement district of the downtown area, seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one, I'll do from the chair. Harry J. Speed passed away peacefully, surrounded by family members in Seminole, Florida at the age of 88. A lifelong Lowell resident, Harry was beloved by many in the community. Harry married the love of his life Donna Sousa Speed, a local model and dance instructor in 1963. For 57 years until Donna's passing in 2020, the couple enjoyed dancing at the Commonwealth Bar Room, dining at the Spare House, making trips to Foxwoods. Born in Acre in 1936, Harry attended St. Patrick's School, was an altar boy for several years. Many of his lifelong friendships were made in the Equi Medical Basketball League and Baseball Leagues. Captain of both the basketball team and boys officers, Harry graduated from Lowell High School in 1952. He received a basketball scholarship to Suffolk University, graduating with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration in 1956. He worked as an architectural sales representative for over 50 years. An avid sports fan, Harry was a coach at Lowell State Teachers College and a founder-coach at the St. Michael's Seminole Basketball League in McFerson Park. He was instrumental in coaching hundreds of Lowell youth over several years, creating lifelong bonds with many of the players and families. As a young man, he was a caddie at Vespa, later becoming a member at Long Meadow and the East End Club, where he was known to play in and photograph many local golf tournaments. Harry loved jazz, whale watching, deep sea fishing, traveling, and telling stories with friends and family. Mr. Speed is survived by John and Ava Speed of McCormick, South Carolina, Mr. Speed DeRoches, Lowell, Mass, Michael and Laura Speed, Seminole, Florida, Monica Speed, Alpharetta, Georgia, Dr. Olivia Speed and Zachary Bishop, Phoenixville, Pennsylvania, Catherine and Shane Obusby, Cummings, Georgia, Leah Speed Cummings, Georgia, Morgan DeRoches, Matthew DeRoches, and Jack DeRoches, Lowell. Also Caroline Speed, Vivian Speed, Harrison Speed, Seminole, Florida, Warren and Pamela Walsh, Woodhaven, Michigan, Lenore Sousa Kennedy, Lowell, Mass, Michael and Jacqueline Sousa Kaplan of Wells, Maine, Joladeen Gaffney, Lowell, Mass, Martha Sousa Kinney of Millbrook, New Hampshire, as well as many nieces and nephews whom he adored. Mr. Speed is predeceased by Donna Sousa Speed, son Matthew Speed, mother and father Harry and Anna Zalovsky Speed, Raymond and Anne Speed Senior, Robert and Mary Sousa, Brendan and Julian Sousa, and many dear friends and family. Services would be held at St. Patrick's in the spring of 2025, and personally speaking, I was lucky enough to know Mr. Speed from a very young age, basically grew up at the same time as, may class of 1993 graduates with the Speed household out in Centerville. And I'm very sorry for the family, but now it's a pleasure to know the man. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can we talk to the chamber? May they all rest in peace. Two, Mayor's business, 2.1 Communication and Remote Participation. Motion to accept or place found filed by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, made to the Transportation Subcommittee December 10th. City Council regular meeting December 10th, Park Recreation Subcommittee joint with Finance on December 11th for acceptance by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Moving on to motions, section 4, 4.1, Counselor Noon, request the city manager to provide an update to the city council regarding the business improvement district of the downtown area, seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we all know, and I know that particularly the Ballbuddy residents also know that Mass Dock has awarded City of Lowes $4 million to, for the Andover Street, you know, 2026 construction. They produce two option, those two options prepared by the Mass Dock Design Engineer for Resurfaced Project. So, the goal of the project is to reduce car speed on that street and creating a welcome environment for, for all as you enter City of Low. I know that the city, the, the city engineer, our city traffic engineer has presented to this council and also to the Ballbuddy's residents as well about the, those two option. And, you know, I filed this motion because I know that, and I trust, that the city manager going to deliver a good new. That good new reflect the concern and input of the Ballbuddy residents at some point in the very near future, because this project need to get start, and, you know, so that's why I put it on, so that, you know, the people know that this city council are not, you know, ignored this issue and concern, and that the manager heard it too, because he was there at the Ballbuddy's neighborhood meeting. That's why I filed the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate Counselor Noon making the motion and his comments are duly noted. So, as, as Counselor Noon stated, there was quite a bit of dialogue on this. You know, the residents in my district are watching in very closely on this and have been very, very engaged, which is great to see. So, between, you know, canvassing the district, which I've done, going door-to-door, keeping all the residents in the know on this very important project, as well as a input session at the Riley School back in mid-November, I've heard from many, many constituents as to which option, and so with that being said, I have heard from, you know, dozens and dozens of my constituents, and by nearly a two-to-one margin, my constituents want it to remain concrete. So, I, you know, stated that morning at the Riley School that I want what my constituents wants. Now, I don't live on Andover Street, so the idea was to get everybody engaged and get a good consensus where the district is at. With that being said, I have a signed petition here in hand of approximately 112 signatures that support remaining concrete, which I will give to the clerk and submit into the file. So, that, that being said, it looks like my constituents have spoken, and by and large, again, from nearly a two-to-one margin, they want it to remain concrete. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'll submit it into the record. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, Counselor Noon, request city manager to work with the Hunger Homeless Task Force and meet with the justices in the Lowell District Court to coordinate resources, seconded by Counselor Yem. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Hunger and Homeless Task Force was started sometime back in 2019, and that's when we then had some conference in the In-Conference Center, and the initiative, the homeless, Housing First Initiative came about. I'm not sure if the Hunger Homeless Task Force still exists, however, what I do know is that, you know, in tackle this issues of homeless issue, that we have already as a city, through the manager, managers in term of funding and whatnot, to a number of discipline that are working on to address the homeless issue. We have addressed, we have reached out to coordinate with the nonprofit organization, religious group, medical, mental health group, addiction center, and all of those, it's great thing. The one thing we have not done much of, or not at all, is the court system to coordinating the effort with them, invite them to the meeting to how we can address these issues together. You know, because it'll be a violation of ordinance, encampment ordinance, and/or criminal cases on trespassing or disorderly conduct and whatnot. The court basically process it and let people out. So, maybe there's a way to coordinate that effort, so that we can say, okay, now, the courts involved may be a conditions of, say, you know, in lieu of fine for violation of ordinance, or in lieu of having criminal record, that you go into this place, sort of speak, for addiction center or for mental health need or help, or some, of some sort. But Housing First, and then address those issue. I think the court have play a key role in this, and that's why I urge that we invite the court into this discussion. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.3, Counselor Noon, request city manager to work the parking department, sorry, to provide the city council with a report detailing the timeline for when the full completion of installation of cameras and lighting in all city garages, seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a registered speaker here. Yes, let, let the register speak first.
John Knowles.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Wayne, for having me here. I have been a downtown Lowell resident for quite some time. I've been packing in the Leroy Garage for the past 12 years. When I first started packing that garage 12 years ago, it was $48 a month to park there as a resident, you know, for my leisure, everything. It has gone up in price every year since then, with no noticeable improvements to that garage. It is currently $93.75 to park in that garage as a resident. There's little concrete falling from the garage, there are no cameras to be spoken of. My personal vehicle's been damaged on multiple occasions in that garage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for bringing this motion forward. This was a discussion point at the recent meeting we had last week. I can't remember which subcommittee it was, but this was one of the things that came up. And, you know, listening to Mr. Knowles, we've all had those same experiences when my wife and I got back from our honeymoon in 2014 after we got married. Her car was parked in the John Street Garage at the time, and she came out and somebody had whacked into the side of it. The concrete falling, it happened on my car. The convertible he mentioned is my wife's car, happened to that one, too. That was a few years ago. We thought we'd got that all cleaned up. Now there's concrete on the ground again. I noticed this morning, when I was going to get in the car, I was walking up the stairwell in the John Street Garage, and the stairwell is just wet. The water, when it rains, just comes into the stairwell. And if you look up, you can see the tray of the stairwell is all rusted through. This was, we spent millions of dollars rehabbing that garage six years ago, I think it was, and it doesn't look like we spent it done. But the camera thing is really huge because we've got people, residents, who spend over $1,000 a year to park their car in their garage. And yes, the contract we have says that the city's not liable for damage. But we should be able to do a better job here. Cameras, in addition to helping any residents who do have damage, figure out where that damage came from, also provides a sense of security and safety for the people in the garage who are coming and going. And I think it's important that we do what we can and figure out what it would take to bring these online. I do know that there are new cameras in the Roy Garage that have yet to come online, but should be soon, and so that's a good thing. But I just want to know where we're at with an overall camera plan and, you know, what we're going to be doing going forward. The more, the better, in my mind. Thank you.
Senator Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be reporting out on the Transportation Subcommittee later on. I'll echo the remarks of Council Noon and Janess. The only, in speaking with Mr. Ryan, I know through you, to the city manager, that he was working with you, City Manager Gol, and looking at what were a timeframe on when all these cameras would be implemented and installed. Can you give the council an update right now where we are with that?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. The Comcast lines were just dropped, so that is in process. That has been a real challenge, for what reason I don't know, to be honest with you. But the company has been a little bit elusive in regards to getting it done. But I think this is a very timely piece, 4.3, for us to put something together in the next probably couple of weeks to get a timeline as to when that's going to happen. But we have had an issue with our internet provider, I should say, but it was Comcast. That was...
We should be anticipating a report soon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Senator Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you, to the manager, don't we have a yearly maintenance plan inspection for all the garages?
Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do, Council. And a lot of these, a lot of activities actually going on within those garages as we speak. Some has been slowed down simply because of the weather. But I anticipate, once again, I think this is very timely to get a detailed report as to what will be happening and what order of magnitude it'll be happening over the coming months, probably.
I remember when we were going over all the garages, we had a detailed maintenance plan that was coming, and we were going to, there's a capital plan for each one. Could you provide us again with that and what actually, when the last inspection was on that garage? Because I think that's important to understand, okay, are we maintained, are, we should know this before the public stands up here and tells us that these things are falling apart and have been for years, he said, over, you know, a couple of years. So if we can get that back, thank you.
Senator Ferris, AI opposed motion passes 4.4. Council Noon requests city manager to provide an update to the city council regarding the business improvement district of the downtown area. Second by Council Janess. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a work that the managers and his team from DPD led by Ali Carter has been doing. It's going to be great for the downtown and can also duplicate it in other districts as well, where property owners and business owners initiate it, manage, and invest in supplemental service for the area. So I've been done in other city and town in the Commonwealth already. You know, I understand that many business owners and building owners has expressed their support, including some delegations as well. You know, I mean, I could say all of our delegation, because it's good for Lowell, and I know that, you know, there's some meetings going on this week as well. I can't wait to hear an update from the managers and his team, Ali Carter. So, thank you.
Senator Belanger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the motion by Council Noon, and I, too, very much look forward to a response on this. You know, this was something that was looked at in my previous tenure on the council back in 2016, and there was not much of an appetite for it. But I think times have changed. We've got a lot more engaged property owners in the downtown district, and the local businesses really need this. And the research I've done, the local cities and towns that have implemented this are far more successful. So I think there's a need for it. I think the time is now. So again, I look forward to the motion response. Thank you.
Senator Robinson.
Thank you. I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I did notice, I believe, part of the package that the state delegation just secured included like a $50,000 sidewalk improvement money or grant for the downtown business district. I think along with this, that's something that we might want to begin conversations about, is really trying to see, I mean, I know it's a large lift and it would probably take multi-phase, but potentially improving our sidewalks and walkability up Merrimack from at least Middlesex to the university, you know. I think it's a main thoroughfare, and we have a lot of foot traffic that we're trying to bring from out of town and our locals. So I think it's definitely a good motion, and I look forward to the report. Thank you.
Senator Ferris, AI opposed motion passes 4.5. Council Belanger requests city manager to have property department place Redmond Street on the paving list, seconded by Council Chow. Council Belanger.
Motion speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
Senator Ferris, AI opposed motion passes 4.6. Council Belanger requests city manager to have the property department consider Merrill Drive for a one-way and no commercial vehicles, seconded by Council Getchea. Council Belanger.
Mr. Clerk, do we have a registered speaker on this?
I do. Steven Maniscalco. Hi, my name is Steve Maniscalco. Ellen and I reside at 32 Merrill Drive. We moved in seven years ago, December 7th this past month. When we first moved in, we noticed a lot of excessive traffic coming up from Rogers Street, actually to the tune of about 4,500 cars a week. I did a survey myself with a counter. Lately, we've had sign changes. We've worked with the city. We've worked with the Liz. At the beginning, we worked with Natasha Vance, who was very helpful in accommodating us to see if we could make some changes to make this a little bit safer for our neighborhood and try to eliminate the cut-through traffic, including commercial vehicles. And I'm talking tractor trailers, dump trucks, trucks of all kinds, bobs, furniture, Amazon, FedEx, UPS, just to name a few. I'm also here representing some of my neighbors as well. They couldn't be here tonight due to the holidays. Brian and Kathy Moynihan, Charlie and Linda Benzwisk, and Tim and Laurie across the street. So we're just looking to find a better way or a solution instead of the Band-Aid. We currently have a sign down there that's permanent at the bottom of Merrill Drive that actually stipulates to no left turn between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00, and also a very large yellow sign that says no commercial vehicles, both at the bottom of Merrill Drive and at the top of Merrill Drive where Fairmont is, none of which anybody has ever recognized and are they just being very disrespectful. I myself have approached a few Amazon drivers. They've been very nice. They're just saying Waze is bringing us up here. You know, we're not familiar with the area. We're doing the best we can. And I'm like, okay, well, that's good, but there is a sign down there that says no commercial vehicle, and you're driving a 10,000-pound truck with a lift gate, 26 footer. I'm in transportation. I have three trucks tonight. I work in warehousing. So I guess what I'm looking to do, Council Belanger had said to me, could you just speak tonight? It's an ongoing safety issue for our neighborhood. It's been minor fender benders, people driving on our properties hit my driveway a couple of times. The road is just not wide enough for two vehicles in three different sections of Merrill Drive to even pass at the same time. So what happens is people move over, let the other pass come down, or if a truck is coming up, nobody can go down Merrill Drive. It's getting out of control. It is a safety hazard. I'd like to see something done about it. I'd like to rid the commercial vehicles from coming up and/or down Merrill Drive. It's not only a nuisance, but it's just a safety. I'd like to kind of take the street back again and make it a residential and not a cut-through road for people that just want to, you know, buzz up the street doing 35, 40 miles an hour just to get to the top of the road. I thank you for your time. I appreciate all your help and what we've done in the past, and look forward to working with you in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's very well articulated by Mr. Maniscalco. I appreciate him coming in, and we had a nice, long conversation at his property. We were outside watching, and it's everything he explained and then some. I mean, the city has taken steps to try and remediate this, but it has not worked. So it is time to take it to the next level, I think, making it a one-way. As the speaker said, it's far too narrow for a two-way street, number one. And the problem is, as far as safety, you know, when you've got Waze, you have Google Maps, and that's where it takes you as a cut-through, all the delivery trucks. And it's really causing undue stress on my constituents there in the street. So I think it's time we make it a one-way. There is a large buy-in by the residents on the street. There's only, there's very few houses, but there are entrances for those who live on Fairmont. Their driveway is on Merrill Drive as well. So there is a buy-in, and I will see, too, that they, my constituents are all up to date as this thing progresses, and hopefully we can at least get to a 60-day trial there to help these folks out. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Senator Council. Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Council Belanger bringing up this motion. It's a very good motion. I, too, was support this motion. I brought this, summed the motion up a couple of years ago, a couple of terms ago, actually. And the city's been working on it. As a speaker, I appreciate him coming to speak tonight as well. It is a very, very narrow street. It's also very, very steep. It's very dangerous during the winter times when it's snowing, it's icy. And if you have two vehicles going opposite direction, especially like a heavy commercial vehicle, that's just accidents waiting to happen. As the speaker said, you know, the city engineer, traffic engineer, has gone out to work on it already, but I think probably maybe do more as the maker of motion mentioned, the speaker mentioned, maybe make it to a one-way, put up more visible signs, make sure there's no commercial vehicle going up the hill. Anything that you can do, Mr. Manager, you know, that the councilors and the residents obviously will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Senator Ferris, AI opposed motion passes 4.7. Council Janess requests city manager to have property department prepare a report outlining expenditures over the last three years in support of businesses in the downtown and other business districts in the city, seconded by Council Getchea. Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion pretty much speaks for itself. It's just a request to just kind of get an outline. I'm not looking to say, you know, business X got Y dollars and Z cents for this project. Just, these are the different buckets of money that we've spent supporting our businesses, you know, CPC funds, the whole, all of them. I don't want to go through them all, because the report will. But that's just what I'm looking for, just to really get an idea of the investments that we've made in our downtown and our other business districts throughout the city. Thank you.
Council Getchea. I apologize, sorry. Senator Ferris, AI opposed motion passes 4.8. Motion by myself, request city manager to work with the City of Learning Committee and Congresswoman Trahan to help secure Learning City designation from UNESCO, seconded by... Second. Janess. Mr. Clerk.
John Wooding. Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Wooding. I'm the Professor Emeritus of Political Science at UMass Lowell, and I've talked to you before about the UNESCO Learning City, but I wanted to give you an update of where we're at and some background for people who are not familiar with it. I did hand out a little cheat sheet for you to look at, study it carefully, it will be on the test later. UNESCO, the United Nations Economic, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, for those of you who are a little bit fuzzy about the acronym, was founded as a major organ of the United Nations in its founding in 1945. UNESCO is an incredibly important global organization that in the 1950s established the UNESCO Institute for Lifelong Learning under the idea and notion that such an activity was critically important to the development of countries as a whole across the globe and to liberal democracy in those countries with a sustainable development. The Institute for Lifelong Learning, about 15 years ago, created a movement and a program to define learning cities across the world, taking learning as a very core part of what they do and what they believe economic development and social and scientific development would mean. That's the background. And in each of those UNESCO countries, which now number over 80 countries who are part of the Learning Cities background, all of UNESCO has, in each country, a national commission on UNESCO. It does more than learning cities. It's also the place where world historical sites are decided. It is made up, depending on the country, of prominent people in that country who sort of vet and assess things that then move up through the national government to UNESCO to be approved. The United States has such a commission, well, it did have, I'll come back to that, of 100 people, notable academics, policymakers, experts, and so forth and so on. This is important because without that commission, you can't get anything promoted in UNESCO, or with whatever country you may be. So that's the background of what we've been trying to do. And what we've been trying to do here in Lowell, going back now some six years, after our contacts and our involvement and friendship with Cork in Ireland, which had just become and awarded the UNESCO's Global Learning City of the Year Award in 2017. And I went there for the conference, the trainee conference that we had. Over 700 people were there, representing some 200 countries, a very major event, which I hope will end up one day in Lowell. From that point onwards, given the encouragement both of the folks in Cork and of UNESCO and of particularly the University College of Cork, President John O'Halloran is a friend, and he's been helping us work on this issue here. And as many of you know, we've been doing this for the last five or six years. The problem has been, in doing that promotion since we started this activity, is that, of course, COVID hit about a year and a half after we started doing this in Lowell, and that made some issues for us as for the rest of the world. And then in 2019, just after we'd applied to become the first UNESCO Learning City in the United States, and we will still be the first, the Trump administration took us out of UNESCO. So for the last four or five years, what we've done on the ground is we've established and had some now six annual learning festivals. We've participated in over 10 global network events, which gives Lowell prominence. Several of us have gone to other countries and presented Lowell's activities around this. We created the Patrick Morgan Award three years ago, awarding it in the name of Patrick Morgan, to the leading innovator in education and learning. We've published two books between Cork and Lowell, representing and promoting the prose, poetry, and literary aspects of these two societies, and that's been very successful. At this point, having applied for membership back in 2018 and that languished, and then, of course, as I said, the Trump administration took us out of UNESCO, we reapplied last year with a letter from the then-current mayor. That has been languishing in the State Department because there is no national commission in the United States, because it was disbanded after Trump took us out of UNESCO. So that doesn't exist anymore. It's in the process, we hope, of being reformed, but we had to try and go through that to get to the State Department, which then approves the application and sends it up to UNESCO. UNESCO and the United Nations are very, we understand informally, are very excited about having the first UNESCO learning designated city in the United States. But at this point in time, having made two applications, and the last application is there in place, and as you see, there's a series of steps here, we've completed all of those steps. We have all the credentials in place because of our history of doing this work that makes us eligible to be a UNESCO Learning City. This is at no cost to the city. It's a designation. It gives us something to hang on to. And my personal concern with this is that if we don't do something quickly, I do believe that probably the Trump administration will again take us out of UNESCO, and you can say goodbye to that designation. Although I do still firmly believe what we've done in characterizing Lowell as a learning city is important, because it already was a learning city. It's not only a simple name, but I think it's a way of branding and framing Lowell that meets the criteria of everything we believe in about sustainable development. And it's also very much tied to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals and to this new initiative around frontline cities, which I know you've been involved in. This is a partnership. And again, I want to reiterate, everything's in place. We need your help to re-up the, push forward the application, which is sitting in the State Department as far as we know, and Laurie Tran's office has been very helpful for this. And we are going to reapply under the name of the new mayor, simply filling in a form. And again, I want to reiterate, this is at no cost to Lowell. And in all of this work for the last five or six years, everybody has been very positive, including the city council, endorsing what we're doing. We have over 40 partners. We have the university and the community college and the national park and the school superintendent, and over 40 organizations in Lowell working with us and with the support of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation. And so we're at this point where we're asking you to make this resolution and also to then do whatever you can, whatever you know, to get this damn thing signed up to UNESCO, and we'll be there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wooding. Thank you. And just quickly, I'll speak from here, you know, very similar to what Mr. Wooding just said, you know, simply, it's just, it's a way for Lowell to brand Lowell as a showcase for all the educational opportunities that we have here. It's stated many times before, the ability to go from pre-K to a doctorate with one of the best community colleges in the country, one of the best state universities in the country, and everything in between. So we're very hopeful for this, and I'd just like to, quickly, if I could, to thank, you know, John Wooding for his help and assistance. Peggy Shanahan as well, has been at the forefront of this for a long period of time. You know, George Duncan of Enterprise, John Chemley, and former mayor Bill Samaras has really been at the head trying to get this completed. And we're going to send it to the Congresswoman's office, and we're going to, you know, send this to Laurie Trahan's office, work with her, and see what we can do. Okay? Thank you. Council Yem, and Council Getchea, and Council Chow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, sir, for coming to speak. And I attend one of the conferences that you put together at the MCC Don Hughes Center. And I remember the mayor of the island was on Zoom, talking to the people who attended the conference. For some reason, I thought everything moving along until the mayor put the motion, and I thanks the mayor for, you know, bringing this up, and I thank my colleagues for supporting this, to move, push forward so that we can get the certification and recognition Lowell is a learning city. Thank you for your hard work, and please, you know, reach out to the manager and his team and the mayor if anything we can do to push this forward. Thank you again, sir, for what you do.
I really appreciate those comments.
Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Through you to Professor Wooding. If you guys already went to Laurie Trahan's office, what more can we do to help?
Well...
Is there something else? Do we go to United States Senators? Where else can we go besides there?
Well, it's a hard question. If you know anybody within the political system, especially at the federal level, or folks in the state who can help us push this through and get it on, it's seemingly, it's not a political problem at the moment, it's a bureaucratic problem. There's no national commission, and so it's sitting in somebody's in-tray in the State Department, ready to go up to UNESCO. We need to get it shoved up there. I mean, I know most of us can't do much about that, but this was an opportunity to remind you what we were trying to do. And what I think of the value of this idea is, which is a no-cost, obvious thing to do, is a win-win for Lowell to become a first learning city under UNESCO here. But, you know, I'm here to say, your support in passing this resolution is a great deal of importance to us.
And I think that's a no-brainer, but I'm just wondering, is there somebody, somewhere else that you know of a name that is on their desk? Is there somebody else other than that that...
Mr. Wooding, if I could help you out there for a second?
Yeah.
Last week, councilors and councils, we had a Zoom meeting, you know, with Ms. Shanahan, the manager's office, the man's office. And then after the meeting, we talked about how far along we are. Afterwards, in talking to Congresswoman Trahan's office, they had asked, they put a motion forward, maybe, you know, re-endorsing the idea of becoming a learning city. Then it goes to her, and she'll be able to go forward to the State Department, stating that the full city council of Lowell endorses this, and she'll try to make it work.
Thank you.
Sound correct?
That's right. Thank you. That's great.
Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing this to the forefront, for the council to be engaged with and along with the city manager's office. Thank you, Dr. John Wooding and Peg, and your entire board that have been working on this project tirelessly over the years. And I know it's frustrating. It's a bureaucratic problem, as you mentioned, but I think, you know, with the support of the entire council, you contribute the work that you do with the manager's office. You know, I'm very hopeful that this will happen. Last week, we had a lengthy conversation and presentation on having Lowell be part of the UN Habitat, the United Nations Development Goals, Sustainability Development Goals. And these are things that the city are doing or have done already with the UN Habitat goals in the same way the Learning City, as you mentioned. These are the things that Lowell have been doing already, but would be great to have that designation, that recognition from the UN. As you mentioned, that could bring a whole bunch of funding opportunities to fund many of the projects, many of the education and the cultural organizations that we have here in the city. So, you know, it'd be great just to do things that we have done already, but to have more support from organizations like United Nations. I look forward to seeing and following what you and your board and the city managers and entire council are able to support you with. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Council Chow. Council Getchea, do you entertain admitting the motion to Lowell City Council endorsing the idea of Lowell becoming a learning city and sending that endorsement to Congresswoman Trahan's office?
Yeah, and if we can also add Senator Markey. I mean, I would send it to both and see if we can get to that also, but yeah, absolutely.
If I, Council Getchea, seconded by Council Dakota. Council Noon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank former mayor Samaras and Dr. Wooding for starting this way back. And you see, Dr. Wooding retired now, so he has all the time, you know, to making sure that this will succeed, you know. Your hard work and perseverance will get us there. I know you heard from the councilors that we will work to re-endorse this again and again until, you know, we get to where we want to go, the first learning city in the United States. So, thank you. Thank you for continuing to fight. We will be with you all the way. Thank you.
Because we're getting tired, but Lowell loves to learn. That's the bumper sticker. And as I said, I think it's a wonderful way to reimagine Lowell.
Right. Thank you. And just as a side, Cork City cannot wait for Lowell City Council to go visit them, so hopefully this works out, you know, Mrs. Shanahan will send us a tour guide, hopefully next year. With the clerk, yeah, sure. Okay, yeah. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the new motion out and do a roll call? Motion by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Dakota to request city manager to send a letter to support the fed delegation regarding the City of Learning Program from UNESCO. Roll call, please.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Ruck.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch. Thank you so much. Section 5, communication, city manager requests approval of out-of-state travel at One Waste Water, motion adopted by Council Noon, seconded by Council Janess. Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I just want to recognize Aaron Fox for this amazing achievement. I don't think we, when you see these come through, I don't think all of us understand the hard work that goes in to get nationally recognized. There's only four people in the country who get recognized for utility leadership. Aaron Fox is one of them, and the only one from New England this year to be accepted. And I just want to highlight some of the things that were written about Aaron to get to this point, because I think it's important, as the manager is smiling, because he knows the dedication that it takes and how humble Aaron is about the job he does for all of us at The Waste Water. Aaron Fox, the executive director of Lowell Regional Water Utility, is a distinguished There's only four people in the country who get recognized for utility leadership. Aaron Fox is one of them, and the only one from New England this year to be accepted. And I just want to highlight some of the things that were written about Aaron to get to this point, because I think it's important, as the manager is smiling, because he knows the dedication that it takes and how humble Aaron is about the job he does for all of us at The Wastewater. Aaron Fox, the executive director of Lowell Regional Water Utility, is a distinguished leader in the clean water industry with over 20 years of dedicated service to the environment and community. In the past two years, as executive director, he has led with innovation, foresight, and a deep commitment to the environment, making him an exceptional candidate. Mr. Fox is nominated for his significant contributions to advancing wastewater management, environmental sustainability, and regional collaboration, as well as his ability to meet evolving regulation challenges with problematic solutions. Throughout his career at the Lowell Regional Water Utility, Aaron served in multiple leadership roles, including engineering supervisor, treatment plant maintenance manager, collections system manager, and operations manager. His wide range of experience spans across planning, engineering, operations, and maintenance, enabling the smooth function of critical wastewater systems. He holds a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Massachusetts at Lowell and is a licensed 7C wastewater treatment plant operator, credentials that further underscore his technical and managerial experience. One of Mr. Fox's standout achievements has been his work to address the pressing regional issues of sludge disposal in New England. As a board member of the NEBRA, he recognized the limitations of smaller treatment plants faced and developed a program that allows over 15 communities in Massachusetts send sludge to Lowell for processing. His leadership on this provided vital relief to neighboring municipalities, fostering regional cooperation in managing wastewater challenges. In recognition of his operational achievements, Mr. Fox was honored with the prestigious Alfred E. Pelquin Award from the NEEA in 2022, which highlights his exceptional contributions to plant operations and support for operation personnel. Aaron's dedication to workforce development is another testament to his leadership. Despite widespread staffing challenges across the industry, he has consistently managed to fill and train positions. Mr. Fox has led a comprehensive reorganization, adding staff during challenging times, so that the utility is well positioned to meet future legal and regulatory requirements while managing operational excellence. Aaron's influence extends beyond the utilities advocating for public engagement, particularly around the critical issue of combined sewer overflows in the Meramec River. Through collaboration with the state senators and legislators, local water resource groups in the Meramec River Watershed Council, Aaron has spearheaded initiatives to raise public awareness about needs for infrastructure investments. His efforts have led to real-time monitoring of E. coli in the Meramec River, enhancing public health and safety. Additionally, Aaron has overseen significant, ongoing infrastructure programs, including sewer separation, INI reduction, and capacity management operations and maintenance programs. These initiatives are expected to reduce the CSO volume by over 100 million gallons annually in the next 10 years, safeguarding the Meramec River and protecting the environment for the future. In conclusion, Aaron Fox's leadership has had a transformative impact on the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility, the clean water industry, and the surrounding communities. His contribution to environmental protection, regulatory compliance, regional issues, public engagement, and workforce development make him an exemplary candidate for the NACWA Utility Leader Award. And believe me, if you ever met Aaron, all of us have been in many, many meetings, you'll never meet a more humble person, and we're very thankful to have Aaron with the city of Lowell.
Aaron, that's from Counsel Getchere. All right, so imagine how everybody else feels about you. Please take the podium, Aaron.
Mayor Rourke made me do it.
That was very well done, Counsel Getchere. Thank you very much. It is, you know, in talking to the manager about this, it's an incredible achievement and outstanding award. And Mr. Manager, a couple of words?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Three to the council. Counsel Getchere, thank you very much for stealing my entire speech. Appreciate that. But having an opportunity to look through this conference is pretty robust, is what we're flying him across the country for three days, maybe three and a half. But very proud of you, Aaron, for all that you've been doing. You are a true leader, and this is something, I think, as the council had stated earlier, you're very humble when it comes to this, but trying to put together the CSO challenges that we will continue to have over the next five, seven to 10 years. And the fact that you've worked here for the city for, I believe, going on 25 years? I want to make sure I'm correct.
Twenty-four, about, yeah.
Twenty-four? Twenty-four years? Graduating from UMass Lowell with both your bachelor's degree and your master's degree, you're, it's really proud. I'm really proud to be here and to say thank you very much for all of your hard work. And I know what you're going to say, it's all of your team. Your team makes it all happen. But whenever there's a question, whenever there's a problem, you're there. And I think that they could not have picked a better person. When you really start to think about the number of organizations throughout this country, you're one of four people. And I think that's something to be proud of, and I just want to say thank you very much for spending your time here in the city of Lowell with your expertise, your, the can-do attitude, and just getting it done every day. So, thank you very much for all that you do.
You can save your speech when you come back, all right? The motion has been made. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yep.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Noon.
Can we bundle the vote, 6.1 to 6.4?
From Counsel Noon to bundle, seconded by Counsel Yem, also in favor of the CI, motion passes. Votes in the city manager, 6.1. Vote to accept, expend $189,971.74 FY25 State Aid to Public Libraries Program Award, 6.2. Amend Jam Plan 230 Mill Street, 6.3. Apply, accept, expend $978,120. Meramec Valley, what was it? What was it?
Vol.
Oh, maybe it's a vol, but close enough. Action Grant, 6.4. Sell and convey 777 Meramec Street to David Daley. All these votes need a roll call, so motion adopted by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Scott. Roll call.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Ten years.
Seven reports, Social Committee, 7.1. Change of rotation, Social Committee, December 10, 2024. Chairman, Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make this really quick, since we've already touched upon quite a bit of it. In attendance were Counsel Janess, Counsel Noon. Also present were Counsel Mercier, Belanger, Yem, our transportation engineer, Liz Altman, Terry Ryan, our parking director, and Giovanni Baez Rose. We called the order and concerning a couple of calming measures, master parking plan and MBTA communities parking. Ms. Altman commented on the following traffic calming measures. Senateable measures will coincide with sewer project in that area, which will include bumpouts and crossing. Wentworth Fairmount Streets will coincide with paving being done this summer. Lewis Street raised crosswalks will be permanent, and Westwood Street sidewalk will be repaired when street is repaved. Counsel Noon noted the citywide approach to traffic measures. Ms. Altman noted assessment are happening now throughout the city. Counsel Janess noted work is needed in all districts and that these measures are currently making a difference. Ms. Altman indicated that permanent solutions are less expensive than temporary measures. Counsel Mercier commented the success of speed bumps and requested installation of sewer lights at the senior center of Traffic Island. Counsel Yem requested increased visibility at that location as well. Counsel Belanger commented on the cost of the temporary speed bumps. The second item introduced was the master parking plan. Mr. Ryan outlined plan by noting that the 2021 study done and the action taken based on that study. Update the meters, expand operation, rate adjustments, equipment upgrade, increase staffing. Counsel Janess commented on placing additional cameras in the graduates for better coverage. Mr. Ryan spoke on the camera situation, which we have stated earlier. Counsel Janess commented on the equipment upgrades and the benefit. I also noted more cameras are needed to increase safety. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chairman Dakota, you have motion to accept, report of progress by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Yem, also in favor of the CI, motion passes. 7.2, we're going to kick out to the January 8th.
Seventh.
Seventh city council meeting. Move out to petitions, 8.1, Ms. Lanius, Jew Polachek, request motion to address council regarding revising the camping ban ordinance. Your motion to accept.
Mr. Polachek?
So, I didn't register myself as a speaker. I handed it in on behalf of some other people, but I guess just quickly, since you called me up here anyway, I guess I'll just say, you know, I know that you probably think that we are not very reasonable people, but I promise that we are. We know that there's a lot of things happening at South Common that were, like, unsavory. And, you know, obviously, like, you don't want, like, there to be a lot of, like, needles next to a school. Obviously, that's not a great idea. But there are a lot of camps, like some of the people that we've brought here today belong to, who are registered to speak. And they are staying out of people's way, they're not doing anything wrong, and they, I don't think that they deserve to be punished. So, that's all I'm going to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Francesco Gudorez.
Happy holidays. Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. The first person you called is my husband. I came to speak in his favor too, so that way he can go home and situate stuff for us for when I come back due to health issues and injuries. I'm just here to speak on behalf of myself, my husband, and any other person in my situation due to homelessness. I just feel like we need a better support system, being in our shoes. I feel like because of one person, we're all being treated the same, which isn't fair. You know, some of us actually try to maintain, try to stay to ourselves, go to work every day. Like, me and my husband, we try to work every day and try to get things going for ourselves so that way we can financially support ourselves and take care of ourselves housing-wise and go to programs and meet with workers and outreach workers the way we're supposed to. And it's to the point that we've been motivating other homeless people to open their eyes to maintaining their places and spots due to overpacked shelters and not really having nowhere to go. It's to the point that we're running out of places to go because the shelters are overpacked, because they're not supplying us with a proper support system. They're moving us around like we're rodents, and it's not fair. We're still human, and it sucks. I can't even go to work without worrying about coming home. And everything that I worked hard for to have some way to live is destroyed. We don't think it's fair. We need more help. They're moving us around like we don't, like we're nothing. And it sucks. I've been homeless for over 15 years due to that, not having a proper support system. And I feel like we need more help. They're not giving us nowhere to go, they're not giving us options. And it's to the point, it's starting to take its toll on me and my relationship, it's starting to take its toll on a lot with me, mental, health-wise and health-wise. And it just sucks. I don't, like, I really don't know what to say. We need help, and moving us isn't helping us because we have nowhere to go. And destroying our stuff isn't helping us because some of us actually work hard and pay out of pocket for the stuff we have. It's not always given to us. We work for our stuff, and it sucks. I've gone through thousands and thousands of dollars of benefits, just working in this, in DTA and social security, giving me benefits to survive. And it's hard to come home. And like I said, everything I paid for is destroyed so that way I have a proper, clean place to live. It sucks. It's really hard for us, and nobody understands that because they look at us like we're nobody. We really need help out here, we need a better support system, and without the city's support, homeless people are nothing. We're getting treated like we're trash, and that's not fair. We need support. Without you guys or somebody's support city-wise, there's nothing we can really do but try to abide by what everyone in the city's asking us. And it sucks when they're destroying what we worked hard for. We have nothing as is. So, the little bit of life we have, it's being destroyed. Me and my husband work really hard, it's to the point, we work for a landscaping company in Andover, and we can't even go to work to support ourselves because we're worried about coming home to nothing. Coming home to my support animal's gone. It's like, it sucks. It really sucks. We need help, and I'm here to fight for that. We all need help. We're not given no options, and it's not fair to us. We're not here for no reason. We're here because people don't support us as human beings, because we're in a messed-up situation. Everybody falls. But if we're being kicked when we're down, what do you expect us to do? There's nowhere for us to go.
Robert Hoey, I'm here to speak in favor of this ordinance for the South Common, and I feel very bad for people that have to live like they do, but remember before this ordinance, the South Common was in deplorable condition. After only a few weeks, it has become a place where people might come out to use it again. If we keep this ordinance in place, we might even get more than two children to come out to use our swimming pools, our swimming pool this summer. The homeowners, the businesses, and the schoolchildren living in the South Common area deserve better. I'm going to keep this yard, I only have one more thing to say. Mr. Manager, your police department has done incredible work in the past couple of weeks, and I hope you thank them. Please keep up the good work, and also tell the police department to stay on their toes because the next issue we're going to try to push throughout this city is fighting the drug dealers, not the drug users. Lowell can do it. We have great staff from our schools to our police departments and our fire department, and we need to get these people that are coming into our city and selling the drugs to all these people, drugs, alcohol, loose cigarettes, whatever it is. I've caught it many a times coming out of vehicles, and I hope that the police department, look at what they just did in two weeks. I'm sorry to say it, I feel bad talking after that young lady just talked because my heart's broken. And there's no doubt we need to do more work for those type of people. They need help, but it just can't come on the backs of all the people that live in that area. They've been taking this for years. The South Common, to me, is the best thing I've seen the city council do so far. Thank you for giving me the time.
Yeah, motion to accept, it placed on file by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to Mr. Manager, I want to thank Assistant City Manager Machado and your staff for their hard work. As soon as the woman just got done speaking, Mr. Machado got up and went out there to ask what we can do to help. So, we have been there helping, and he's gone right out there again. You can't see it on the camera, but he walked directly out there to see if there's more we can do to help. So, we are helping, and we're trying to help. All people have to do is accept the help, and we'll continue to try that help. We don't want anybody to think that we're not doing that. And that was in a matter of seconds after the lady spoke. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your staff also, and the health staff, and everybody for trying to get this help out there. So, I just want people to understand that we are here to help, and Mr. Machado has got up there and helped, but we do have a, we have a duty to our city also to keep it safe and also make sure people are living within a means that is healthy for them also. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I would like to thank the speaker that came out and spoke. I mean, I can only imagine the struggle. And realistically, this ordinance is establishing acceptable uses in shared public green space. Now, ordinance aside, if we have a resident coming in requesting help, as my colleague just pointed out, I'm glad to see Mr. Machado jumped in and will try to do. See, this is where we've said as a council repeatedly, on the floor, many times, we need assistance. This poor resident that was speaking at the podium needs assistance, and assistance not necessarily on a local level, but we can advocate for those that need that assistance. One of the big things that jumps out to me is the Lowell Sun. They're applauding $6 million in earmark to local projects. All of them are great projects and desperately needed, but I'm very disappointed. Not one mention of assisting a resident, like, that just came to the podium. Yes, there's some money going toward veterans housing, which is great to see as well, amongst other great projects that's desperately needed. But we have a real breakdown in service providers, and I think we need to start looking at whether[1796.45] But we have a real breakdown in service providers, and I think we need to start looking at whether we can adapt and change the way we're working with partners, kind of establish some performance-based contracts, and look to check the boxes because we continuously hear, for example, Lowell Housing, expansion, expansion, expansion. We're willing to jump up and help them as a partner, community partner. There's no reason that hard work in residence like that shouldn't have to live outside when we have a great partner in our backyard like Lowell Housing. That's just one of many. So, I think there's plenty of problems with the social service network, and I think we as a system, a city, for whatever we have input and control on, I really do think to get everybody in the room and start looking at performance-based contracts and incentives, performance-based incentives for our partners, because it is, it's, those that want help should have help available. Those that refuse the help, well, that's a separate conversation. But I think what we heard tonight is somebody that's saying they don't want help. They need help. So, anything we can do, I would fully support to really keep that hand out, and as I believe you, Mr. Manager, have said many times, we're more than glad to offer a hand out, or a hand up, actually, but not a repeated hand out. And so, that doesn't look like that person is looking to smack our hand away. They're coming requesting that hand, so please, let's give it to them. Thank you.
Motion was made, also in favor of the CI, motion passes. Section 9, City Council Executive Session, 9.1. Thank you. Nine, ma'am, thank you. 9.1 Executive Session, to consider, thank you. To consider and discuss ongoing negotiations relative to LePole Company's LLC, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position, and further to consider and discuss three open meeting law complaints filed against the City Council November 27, 2024. The motion entered executive session and also adjourned from that session by Council Dakota, seconded by Council Belanger. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercier, Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Section 10, announcements, Council Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. On the, in the corner course area, we will be having the dedication for Mickey O'Keefe. That's 10 o'clock this Saturday. The public is welcome and to honor a true Lowellian. So, hopefully, everybody's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that tomorrow before the Lowell Lawrence Wrestling Meet at Lowell High, the team and the school will be recognizing Coach Bossy for 60 years of service to the Lowell Wrestling Program. Really an amazing accomplishment, and the list of his accomplishments as a coach is unparalleled. If anybody wants to attend, doors open at 4:30, and the recognition will happen at 5:30 before the varsity meet starts at 6:00.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. I'd also like to just pass this along. I think it's very relevant. If people are worried about their heating costs this winter, the Home Energy Assistance Program, HEEP, provides eligible renters and homeowners in Mass with financial support to pay their winter heating bills. Apply now through www.comteamm, C-O-M-M-team.org/fuel to help keep you home comfortable through the colder months. That was something that community teamwork just rolled out recently again. I don't know, it's probably a revisit, so it might mean there's still some funding available, as well as this Saturday at 2:00 p.m., we're going to have a grand opening, finally. I know a lot of people have been asking about it, of Benny's Backyard Barbecue. It's in the old Marcos Food Truck at Appleton Street, 282 Appleton Street, and it kind of is 90 Thorn Dyke, right on that corner intersection, and that begins at 2:00 p.m. And we're looking forward to having another barbecue location in the community, so come on out this Saturday. Thank you.
Any others? Council Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two birthdays to celebrate today. First, Council Chow, who turned 21 again, and also, and also very own Kelly Oaks, her birthday on the 21st of December. We want to wish both of them a happy and healthy birthday. While I have the mic on behalf of my family and I, we wish everyone a healthy and safe Christmas. Thank you very much.
Motion adjourned by Council Dakota, seconded by Council Janess.